Yeah, well, welcome. We'll start out with a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming. Tonight's meeting was a special meeting to hear public comments and to talk about the 2020 comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements for the Port of Allen. So I am going to turn it over to our executive director.
I'm going to move this up here. If that's alright. And hopefully I don't unplug anything. Okay. This is an update to the 2018 plan. We have to do this plan every six years. The 2018 update was the six-year update. This is just kind of an update to the original plan. We didn't really have to do this, but we have some projects that are done, some that we want to look at and re-prioritize and... I don't know about any of you, but I hate when somebody reads PowerPoints to me. So I'll just let you read it. If you have any questions, raise your hand and we'll kind of go from there. Anyway, the idea of the plan is just to give us a clear and comprehensive vision for the future, kind of a roadmap of where we're going, where we want to go. Naturally, all the plans depend on funding, so we are aggressively pursuing funding and we've been fairly successful the last couple of years, but there's no telling if that's always going to be the way it is. So, the basic plan includes an inventory of our current assets, all the projects currently in process, prioritize the list for '20 through '23, and we have a metric for measuring success to each one and a work plan for implementation. So, this is a list of the assets. I won't read them all to you. I guess when you all look away, I know you've read it all. Existing in-progress, carried over from 2018 is the Oyster House. While you can look at it out there in the parking lot, it doesn't look like we've had a lot of progress, but actually we have. It's been behind the scenes that nobody has seen, but we do expect to have something going on that you can see shortly. Why is this viable? Here's all the reasons.
Larry, I just wondered if you have a chance to verify about that well on the North Shore property, if you could include that in the house.
You know, that's a good thought because I didn't, you know, say add a side out of mine kind of thing, so thank you. This is our timeline here. The implementation of this depends on funding, but we did get funding for it, this last section of the legislature, and expect more. And here's all the progress we've made. We figured out how much it was going to cost. We hired a professional engineering firm, Art Anderson and Associates, to put together an engineer's estimate for us. We got a capital budget appropriation of $218,000, and what that's for is it's going to take out the old launch ramp here, do all the design engineering for the new ramp, or the new platform, I mean, and all the pilings and everything. And that'll about take up that. The North Bay Historical Society has received $160,000, and they're doing the stabilization of the building itself. And with that $160,000, they also had a match on, I forget how much it was, was it a two-to-one or... Yeah. So, it's more than 160, you know. We have set up engineer's drawings in process right now, and then you can see the rest of where we're at there, but design engineering is in process for the pilings and the platform itself. How are we going to know that we're successful? The launch ramp comes out by the end of the year, all the engineering's done, and you can see what it says right there. And now, here's the new projects. These have been prioritized by the results of all the public input which we have received, and some of these were listed in the 2017 comprehensive scheme but had no action, some were listed in 2018 scheme, but here's all the public outreach that we did for this. So you can see, we did quite a bit of it. I'm sad to say we didn't get as much response as we got two years ago, but it is what it is. So, project number one for new projects would be to develop a state-of-the-art commercial light industrial park. We've talked about this before. The port almost got involved in one, I guess around 2008 or somewhere in there. Was that when it was? And because of the economy, the deal fell apart at the last minute, so we'd like to revive that with the economy and the condition that it's in. We feel like this is something, this time has come, and we have some other projects that could fold into this. So why is this viable? There you go, you can see that. Questions about this? And here's some more reasons. One of the things that, we wouldn't mind if it jump-started a tech industry cluster here. You know, Amazon is moving in here and it will create some opportunities for other tech things, and it's just going to be right down the road. You know, there hadn't been any new industrial commercial space built in North Mason in years and years, so... How we're going to do it? Pretty much right there, pretty simple. Got to figure out where to do it, figure out how to pay for it, and figure out how to get enough land to expand it beyond its original footprint, because if it's as successful as we believe it'll be, it should grow. So, we want to plan for that. And success? Well, all the buildings, they'll secure long-term leases or sold at a profit, it just kind of depends. We don't necessarily have to own them. We can develop them and sell them, but we are looking forward to it becoming a major revenue source for the port. And we're looking for, it would be something where our maintenance staff could work on it as well, so it would just be a continuation of the staffing level we already have. New project number two, construct a staging area for boaters at the Allen Waterfront Park. This was a target of opportunity for us. In 2016, the commissioners directed me to write a letter to Mr. and Mrs. Ober and that owned the house on the corner here, and said, "If you ever sell or want to sell, we'd like first write a refusal to buy." Well, sometime during 2019, we got a letter from them and said, "Yeah, we're ready to sell." So, we negotiated a price, had it appraised, and, you know, just did all the things that we need to do for this, and then we got a $500,000 grant from RCO to buy the property and develop a staging area for the boaters. What we want to do is tear that down, put together a two-lane staging area. So, and the way that we envision it is that it will accommodate two lanes of traffic with three sets of vehicles each, a tow vehicle and a boat up to 24 feet with a 10-foot separation between them, should be easily able to accommodate six boats at one time. The reason is, we want to get the traffic off of Drum Street. In summertime here, when people are trying to launch, the traffic on Drum Street just backs up, sometimes out onto the highway. This should alleviate that, should keep this stuff off of private property as well. And also, another issue that we have here during summertime from May to about Labor Day, the gazebo is a major event venue. We have weddings here almost every weekend, sometimes both days, sometimes Friday and Saturday and Sunday. What happens is, when those boats or tow vehicles are lining up to use the ramp, they block the entrance to get in and out of the parking lot. So this should solve that problem because it also includes redoing the parking lot where the Oyster House sits right now. Project number three, develop a first-class indoor shooting range. This is something that we've bandied about for a couple of years and we believe would be a major moneymaker for the port. Mason County has about 60,000 residents, 10,000 of which have concealed carry permits. That doesn't count everybody that has a gun that doesn't have a permit, so... And I think, we all know there's a bunch of those. This would give them a place to legally go shoot. There are some others. There's one in Tacoma, one in Issaquah, one downtown Tacoma, and one out by the freeway, by Bridgeport Way. There's another one in Olympia, and one in Bellevue, and they're all making money hand over fist. This should be a great revenue generator for us. Law enforcement, regional law enforcement agencies have committed to use this facility if we build it, so we'll have some regular income from that. But there's a lot of other potential income besides hourly fees to shoot. We would sell ammunition, we wouldn't sell guns, we're not going to be in the gun business. We'd rent a gun that you could shoot, if you were curious about one, but also education and gun safety classes as well. So, why is this viable? Well, a lot of that's the reasons I just enumerated there. And here's some more. For those of you that came late, I always said, "I hate when people read PowerPoints to me," so read them yourself. But it... Yeah?
Have you done some due diligence on, like, the size of building that this would take?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, it's, we're going to need about two acres of land to do this. And it depends if we want to have a store with it or just the range, and how many shooting lanes we have.
10,000, 12,000?
Uh, about six.
6,000, 12,000?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's pretty compact because there's nothing there. You know, you have an entryway when you come in, you have a little, maybe a store where you sell stuff like ammunition, earmuffs, you know, that sort of stuff, and then there's just the shooting range. Yeah, you do. You do. You know, you've got questions about sound, you've got questions about air filtration and, you know, lead recovery.
My cousin owns a gun shop. He's a deputy, and he did a lot of due diligence on that. I should get you together. He's got a lot of due diligence on what it would take to build it, and I already cashed half a loan for that.
We should talk. Also, RCO has money for this, and they're pushing it, so... You know, it gets people out of the woods, which isn't an issue. Luckily, nobody's been killed out in the woods yet, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. So, and again, find a suitable location and apply for grants and design it and build it. And success metrics would be, you know, gun safety classes become an ongoing community event and an additional revenue situation for the port. We reduce the shooting in the forest, we have law enforcement there all the time, which I think having law enforcement in this end of the county a lot more than they're here now, wouldn't be a bad thing, so... And because of the location, we want to locate it somewhere near the county line. We'll draw people from Kitsap as well, because there's nothing there. You know, they used to have Kitsap Golf and Country Club, Kitsap revolver and rifle range, but it's been closed down for the last two years, and there's no telling when it might open, so...
By the new fire station.
Yeah. That's one possibility, you know, somewhere out on Highway 3 is another. It just depends where we can find enough land at a reasonable price. Pardon? His land, part of it lies in Kitsap County and part of it lies in Mason, and that's a problem, so... Him and I have talked about this before. I talked to him about this project, the combination sports project, and there's not enough of his land in Mason County to do this, so... But anyway, this is the other project. This was our number-one project last time in 2018. Problem we ran into here is we need about 20 acres of land. We can't find 20 acres of land that we can afford to do this. But the, and that's why we've downgraded it from one to four. It's based on Luke Jensen Sports Park in Vancouver, which is a really popular place and a first-class facility. I'm not going to go into all the economics of this, but there's hundreds of soccer players and softball players and baseball players, and I know, I umpire baseball myself, and the biggest problem that we run into with, you know, select league baseball and high school baseball is not enough fields. You know, softball runs into the same thing. But at any rate, here's all the reasons this is viable. There's nothing like this here, there's nothing like it in Kitsap County, so we would draw from both. And I'll let you all read that for a second. Maybe you have a question or two? I guess not. That's why it's viable, you know. The high school has a stadium suitable, but the Highway 3 freight mobility corridor may take part of that away. We don't know for sure yet, so... MCRAD in Shelton has soccer fields, but they're booked up all the time. Same thing with the baseball fields they have. And this has the potential to generate substantial revenues for the port, but also in the form of league rental fees and everything else for the port. But the other big attraction to this is that if we can attract tournament play here, every, and we've got a bunch of statistics about this, every tournament day generates about $75,000 a year for your community. You know, and people buying gas, people eating restaurants, people staying in hotels that we don't have, but maybe somebody will build one, and those kind of revenues. And county runs on sales tax revenue, and these are great sales tax revenue generators. So, and here, success metrics, so... And then, project number five, develop Sweetwater Park in conjunction with the Salmon Center. Why is this viable? The port has a responsibility to develop some additional facilities in North Mason and the Belfair area. This is, would be a fully ADA compliant recreational facility, something that there is not in Mason County at this point. Offers an opportunity for, create some synergy for tourism with Theller Wetlands and the Lower Hood Canal Discovery Trail, as well as the sports complex if we can make that work. Be an ongoing, long-term relationship with the Salmon Center, which we don't think would be a bad thing. Can be considered economic development because when completed, it'll generate ecotourism, and it also has an environmental component, or educational component that would add to economic development as well. Our timeline is, timeline's kind of fluid right now. We are in the process of getting the final paperwork worked out for getting the deed for the property, and then we'll coordinate with the Salmon Center for joint grant funding, create an MOU for it, and everything else that goes with the project. How do we know if it's succeeded? ADA compliant for tourism, revenue neutral, doesn't cost us any money, doesn't, you know, doesn't cost us any, doesn't really generate any either, but it's a park, you know? And it becomes possibly an additional wedding venue, which could create a new revenue stream for the port. And then we have some additional projects that... Yes?
I do have a study, and I can find it for you, but there is actually some great economic development studies for small communities, especially when you haven't really developed, when people, they invest in the municipal parks and trail systems. It becomes a draw, like Theller, that can actually be, once you have some of those other pieces in place or more restaurants, so you don't have shrinkage outside of the leakage outside of the county, but once you have something like that, you can actually be a pretty good economic development booster. I've got some numbers on that.
That'd be great. That'd be great, be great for, you know, the port, be great for the county. Additional projects, upgrade to the Lynch Cove Swimming Pool. This is, I'd actually like Commissioner Cooper to talk about this.
Yeah, so the, in 2018, one of the biggest wants from the community was this swimming pool. So, the school district was here, talked how it's not really a good money-spending thing for a school district, it's not really financially viable for the county, so there is a neighborhood pool that needs some repairs, that Larry and I were taking a trip to Spokane, and the RCO manager was on the phone, and was like, "Hey, do you got any money for pools?" She's, "We have so much money for pools that, you know, just decide what you want to do." So, we approached the Lynch Cove Homeowners Association, they need some improvements done to their pool, it's open one year, not the next, and it's kind of where we're at right now. We don't know how much further we'll go or what they want to do at this point, but definitely talked about, it would have to be open to the public at some point. How that works, we don't know. The high school kind of has the same RCO grant, open to the public for the track, and it's kind of in its infancy discussion phase right now, but I thought it was a good opportunity hearing the community input about the need for a pool, and we talked about, you know, where do kids go to learn how to swim from the community, and we think this might be a spot for them.
This is one of those things where, if we can make it work, it'd be great for the community. If we can't make it work, we can't.
It would be good. My concern on behalf of the port would be maybe some concern for liability if it's open to the public.
That would be with the homeowners association. Our part of this would be to get the pool repaired and get grant money from RCO, which will require it to be open to the public somehow, but after that, it's the homeowners association, we'll wash our hands of it.
They would grant into those bases where the port...
They have to grant to us, and then we do the repair and turn it back over to them, and yes, they'll do that.
That's even better.
Yeah.
The liability.
Yeah.
That surprises me, but that's even better.
Yeah, and that's why this is attractive to us, because we can create something that the public can use, and we don't have any real expense for doing it, and we don't have any liability once over.
Kudos.
And then the other one is establish a co-working facility. Does everybody know what that is? Co-working facility is a place, it's an office that's shared with a lot of other people. We have, there's three of them, I think, that have opened in Kitsap County in the last two years. A really nice one in Paulsboro called The Vibe. There's one that the Port of Chehalis did, downtown Chehalis. They did, took an old building that was falling down and refurbished it, and it's hugely successful. And what it's for is solopreneurs. They can come in, they get Wi-Fi, you have a shared conference room, a shared, you know, smaller office space, but everybody works kind of like, kind of like in just workstations around the building. You have a shared kitchen, but it's for people that don't need an office all the time or the expense of it. The way that it works is it's a membership. You pay so much a month, you can come and go as you want and use all the facilities, you know, be Wi-Fi and high-speed Wi-Fi and everything else that somebody needs in an office, but without all the expense. There's one of these that's operated on Bainbridge Island for about 10 years. It's called Bainbridge X-Pads, and it's been hugely successful. And one in Paulsboro is doing really well. So, this is another one, be contingent upon grant cycle funding. Got to find a suitable location. We had looked at that 3D building in Belfair and tried to get a intergovernmental transfer with the Department of Transportation, but they wouldn't do it. But that would have been an ideal location for this, and, you know, so we're open to the possibility of doing it again, and it's just a target of opportunity. If we find the right space, it would be worth doing, so... So we're just going to be on the lookout for it and see where it goes. But it generates, you know, the success metric is it generates enough membership with membership and usage fees to cover its cost of operation. We don't see it as a real big revenue generator, but as long as it pays for itself, it services the community. And then, finally, development of the Lower Hood Canal Discovery Trail. We've talked about this before. This is kind of a joint project with several different people, and they would like the port to be the lead agency because we're the only one that would qualify for government funding, and, you know, I think there's a lot of stuff for this that needs to be worked out, and money is going to be an issue, but it's not going to be our money, but if we manage the project, we can get paid for doing it, so... And timeline would be whenever money showed up. And then, just some additional notes about the upgrade to the Lynch Cove Swimming Pool. Scott covered that. Purple Pipe is something that we had talked about before. We'd still look at that if the opportunity came along. And then the Beards Cove Skateboard Park, this was in the 2018 plan, but we only had two or three people that were in favor of this, everybody else was against it, so we just dropped it out of the plan. So with that, any questions? Going once, twice.
Yeah, I do. I know. By the time we get all these things done, my kids are going to be grown, it won't, it'll be a moot point. By then, maybe I'll have great-grandkids. We don't have parks. With the parks that have now gone to the early learning center for Theller, there are no parks for kids to play. There's no swings, there's no slides. I mean, there is this one. Good Lord, I come all the way into Allen from Belfair to play at it.
We'll need a place to put it. You know, and...
That is true.
You know, those big toys are not cheap. That one out there's...
Well, I know.
That one out there's $100,000.
Yeah. But I'm looking, you know, I ended up going into Fort Orchard for the water park, and I mean, my kids have a ball at that one.
Yeah, my grandson was young, we used to go there too.
Yeah.
Because it's fun for little kids.
But honestly, it's not utilized, because we can be there and the only thing that comes in is a bus from the daycare center most of the time.
It's used pretty hard on the weekends.
Weekends, yeah. Daytime, I mean, and that's where I go. It's because, you know, you might find, you know, 20, 30 families, and that's ridiculous, you know, during the summer. I mean, it's crazy, and most of them are military families, and I'm talking to McCormick Woods. You know, you would think that they would be, you know, jammed in there, and they're not.
You know, there's not a lot of families in McCormick Woods with young kids.
Well, that's true. Then what'd they put a park there for? You know, or, you know, grandparents, I understand that.
They're, you know, I'm pretty familiar with all of that from a previous job I had.
Really?
And it would take an hour to explain all of the stuff that goes with that.
But it's the idea of, we don't have any parks with a swing or a slide or, you know...
No, I hear you.
Nothing.
That could be done at Sweetwater Park.
Yeah.
Right in the middle of Belfair.
I mean, it was great to have the Theller, but now they're all fenced in because of the school... I mean, it was great to have the Theller, but now they're all fenced in because of the school kids. So there's nowhere to go, and in summer, they're locked up, so you can't use them. I mean, it's terrible, because, you know, and it's horrible that you have to go to the Baptist church behind it, and you use it during the summer.
That little play area at Theller was paid for by Rotary.
Right.
And then, under the auspices that it was going to be open to the general public.
Right. And then you got a fence put around it.
It's my leaning Sweetwater.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
I, I did have another question for Larry. We talked about the survey a little bit briefly, and I wondered when that first got posted, or when your first response was.
You know, I forgot to look, actually.
Well, it, it has to have been up for a couple months, I would think.
Yeah.
And that seventeen isn't very many responses.
I'm, I'm more disappointed about that than I know how to tell you. You know, because we promoted it.
I think everybody's really disappointed.
We promoted it hard, promoted it on Facebook, we promoted it on Instagram, promoted it on our website, and...
Not a very helpful sample.
And we got a lot of other people that knew about it, to share the, the survey link, but I, you know, I'm very disappointed, actually, in the response.
Well, thank you for sending it.
So what I'd like to do, uh, is open it up for public comment, but first off, we have two written comments. One from Jeff Carey that we received tonight, if we could put that in the minute, Jeff Carey's comments. And then Ken, would you like me to read your comments, or you, would you just like them, or would you like to read them, or would you just like them entered into the minutes? I've read them.
What's that?
I've read your com, the comments that you submitted. Would you like me to read them?
No.
Or enter, enter them into the minutes.
I'm fine if you just enter them into the, uh, minutes.
Okay.
Consider what I, what I ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so what I'd like to do is that if somebody has, uh, excuse me, specifics on any of the projects, uh, opposition, uh... So, I'd like to hear it, or pros and cons, we'd like to hear it, so, uh, feel free, introduce yourself and talk about them, so...
I'd love to, I'd like to do a little comment. I came up tonight to comment in support of the Sweetwater Creek, uh, project. As you guys know, I've worked on it a lot, uh, for years. That actually was, uh, a project even from the days of Neil Werner, that we started, uh, planning that with Brewstees and Associates. It has to be fifteen years now, probably, or so. And a lot of community members, uh, donated and gave to that. And when we went through our second round of fundraising, uh, we really kind of decided to go for it, and get some topographical and surveys done, so we could really actually have Brewstees do some realistic design work. And we did that, and we raised a lot of money. I can't recall, there might have been a hundred, a hundred and, a hundred and fifteen people, I think, that donated to that. I mean, I have, uh, the list somewhere still, I think I've turned it into you guys before. Uh, a ton of support, uh, and, uh, financially and otherwise. And then, uh, a myriad, a myriad amount of, uh, different people that volunteered their expertise when it comes time to move forward with some implementation. People volunteering for clearing, people volunteering for disposal and construction work. People volunteering their expertise as an engineer, Michael Staten, uh, a lot of people, uh, an architect that had volunteered some work. So there's a lot of in-kind already committed to that, a lot of, a huge amount of support. And I would tell you that I've talked about that project a lot, over the last five years especially, six years especially, with the exception of one individual, uh, I've never heard anything negative about that project. And so, I, I just don't see a downside to another park and an interconnected trail system in Belfair. Uh, there's no downside to getting families out and, and walking. There's no downside to economic development that'll come subsequent to it. Uh, and... What was the other piece I wanted to say? I've got a lot I could say. I want you to know that, that I wasn't the only one working on that years ago. If you all remember the, the days of Ken Wilson, right? Ken actually got that put in the Mason County Comp Plan, in, under the Parks and Rec. And he was working on the trail system that went from Allen to the new park that was there a couple years ago. It was finished down here by the, the Salmon Hattery, Culture Creek, yeah, thank you. And then, uh, he and I worked together, but Ken did an amazing amount of labor, on this, uh, other trail system that he would go from his, uh, this park down here, up over the top and tie into Theller. And that's when Rick Krieger came along and started, uh, saying, hey, I want, you know, I'll be a part of that, and we'll create another loop, and started talking to Mindy about some of the plans and potentials, and, um, some really amazing vision that took place. But Ken originally, what got into the Mason County Comp Plan for Parks and Trails, and I verified that a couple years ago when they were updating theirs, and made sure it was in crystal clear. But even Ken, years ago, had cited, and there will be a future park in this pathway. This trail will go down, up over the hill to a future park at the, at the Water Wheel, and then cross over into the Theller Wetlands. So, this has been something that's been in the works and supported for fifteen-plus years. So, it's, it's in the County Comp Plan already. So, I know there's been, uh, an individual that perhaps has discussed it shouldn't go in the Comp Plan. It's another attempt to try and block funding and block the progress, and, which is interesting. But, uh, I just want you to know that, that would make zero sense, and I, I would really hope that you wouldn't take all the work that hundreds of people have done, and volunteered, and donated to, and the work product that we've already produced, which has got some glowing accolades. And I would hope that you would remember that, and make sure it gets into your Comp Plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thanks. I just want to talk real quick about Sergeant's Oyster House, and I'll steal Judy's thunder. Years ago, when I worked for the state, I was so happy when I saw that oyster house get moved off that piece of property, because I'd get calls every night to remove people from that building, and I swore I'd never have to deal with it again. But it's a project that I've, I feel strongly about. It's something that the community has put a lot of heart and soul into it, and I've heard, and I understand, the comments that we can be doing something else, this is a money pit. Uh, I, I, I take that to heart. But, uh, through all the work and all the grants that we've received, the biggest thing I want to do now is see us move as quickly and as efficiently as possible to get that thing off those pilings and over the water. So, I know there's been comments, uh, made, and Kat, I agree with you. Some of these projects we have will be long gone when they're done, but I'd like to see that one done. And I'm sorry, Judy. Judy's put her, her heart and soul into it, so, uh... But those are the comments that I saw, some of the ones in the survey. Get rid of that thing, uh, and, uh, move on to other projects. So that's all I had to say. Sorry about that.
No, hey, that's great.
Kat, I'm with you too. I mean, the week before I started here was the week they drug it from 302 to the parking lot, so I just started my second term last month, so that was six years ago, and then there it sits. In government, it's hard to make things go fast, and there's money, and there's permits, and there's, you know, making sure the community's involved, but I think we've got some good projects in our plan right now, and, and I think they're ranked fairly, and some may never happen. Hopefully, some do, and we're pretty excited about the future.
I mean, I really do. I wish we, you know, had a windfall that just put them all there, and boom, it could all happen at one time, you know? But it, it's just the idea, and it does, it moves slow.
Some come on, some come off, they go back on.
But, you know, it's like the freight corridor. I just don't want to see it take fifty years. I'd like to see some one before I die.
I think that one actually will happen.
Yeah.
Because it is scheduled to be done by twenty-five, so I'm pretty confident.
Oh, the freight corridor or the, or the...
Freight corridor. No, that one, long before that.
I do have to say, though, I want to publicly say thank you to Kat's husband, Mike Ross, for doing what he's done, because, you know, there was a period of time when it was, things were pretty slow and pretty tough, but, you know, I want to thank Dan Orchard Two for helping, keeping things going on the, on the oyster house, because I know that this has been laborious, uh, time-consuming, expensive, but, um, just even people volunteering and putting their own money into it. It will be the gem in Allen. It will be. I'm pretty confident.
Every time you look at the concept, I mean, you, you look at the concept here, and it'll get there. It just, it does take the time, you know? When you look back at the pictures of what this area used to look like and what it looks like now, you have to understand, it doesn't happen overnight. But it's the idea that, you know, the concept of just, you know, a place to do business. These things happen, and sometimes it is overnight, and all of a sudden, you've got a business office. And you're going like, wow, why didn't we think of this twenty years ago? Because people are working out of their bedrooms, for crying out loud, and, you know...
Well, you know, I came from the private sector after thirty years in business for myself. The biggest frustration to me in government is how long it takes to get anything done. I mean, you know, private sector, private sector, you make a decision, and you implement it, and that's it. You know, but here, government doesn't work like that.
Yes, yes. Okay, I, go right in your field, feel free.
Hi, Ken Van Busker from Belfair. And I submitted these comments about the, uh, Comprehensive Scheme of Harbor Improvements earlier this afternoon. I would encourage you to, to consider my comments, uh, about project number five, Sweetwater. And I would like to further discuss with you. And then, um, we, uh, we didn't really discuss the two issues that I, um, brought forward from your, uh, uh, retreat that you had in Leavenworth. That was, uh, one was the issue I, I brought forward about the, uh, four-way intersection. And, uh, I think, and the other was the issue that Representative Griffey was working with you about, that it never ended up on the Comp Plan, but you discussed it at the, the retreat. Both those issues, I think if they had been on the survey, you would have got a lot more results. And I just would ask that you consider adding those, those two projects onto your Comp Plan, because they're very important for both communities. And then, uh, lastly, uh, at the retreat, you had a discussion about, uh, not taking a position on the proposed gravel pit down the North Shore, adjacent to the port's property. And I just, uh, just asked that, uh, if, if you folks do have a, a well on that property, that, uh, if the, the gravel pit gets rolling again, that you consider taking a position on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken, on the sidewalks that Representative Griffey was talking about, uh, we've talked about looking, exploring for money. And, uh, Larry was down in Olympia, I think, two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago, and spoke with Representative Griffey. If there's any way we can get some money to start the feasibility on those sidewalks, uh, we're going to try to do it.
Yeah, I was, I was down in Olympia last week, and I heard about it, and that was before I saw it in, in meeting minutes.
Right. I, I think...
So, there, there's talk about it going on down there. That's why I would encourage you to get it on your Comp Plan.
I think also adding the sidewalks here would help a little bit in reducing the, uh, anxiety when you pull out of here, because people won't be able to park so close to the church and block your line of sight to pull out. I, still, people go way too fast in this section of road. But I think we'd have to back the, we, we're going to have to back the parking up, uh, back, uh, towards the south to give people more visual, uh, sight to, or more sight to see what oncoming traffic's going to do. And then, uh, regarding the four-way intersection, maybe, uh, you could talk about that?
I didn't get to see your comments yet. I don't have his comments.
County...
I've sent them to you twice.
I haven't gotten them. Sorry.
Okay.
What were the concerns of the four-way?
It's just not, it's not traffic control. I mean, it's, it's backing everything up. And that, you know where the bottleneck is. Uh, people are using old Belfair, uh, Clifton everywhere to go around the intersection. It's just a mess. So, whether it's a roundabout in that area to keep traffic moving...
Are you talking about, uh, Clifton Lane? Clifton Lane, right?
Four-way, yeah, the four-way intersection.
Four ways to...
I'm sorry.
At Old Belfair House. It was a discussion that we had last week with, uh...
Tara?
Tara.
Yeah.
Exactly. And that was, that was not included in the 2018 traffic update, even though it was one of the components of the 2004 subarea plan that the port was involved.
You know, it's funny, though, I'm on the PRTPO, and, um, WashDOT, because there is that private lane to, you know, Clifton Lane is private, um, in the county and state, that, it's a lot more complicated than just that, but, you know...
The port could be a leader, as long as it suggests.
But I can only, we can only get a few things, but, no. I do have to say, like I said, Highway 300 has been my, my push to get something done on Highway 300.
If I might, the only other thing I might suggest, that whenever you approve this comprehensive plan, uh, forwarded to the county, because they're starting to, um, redo the subarea plan and environmental impact, so... I think it'd be important to include whatever you come up with to them for any of the projects that are, uh, proposed in the area.
Actually, Ken brings up a good point on the subarea plan. More support for the project number five for Sweetwater. Uh, that was, uh, spoken about and discussed with, boy, over twenty public meetings and vignettes and planning.
I disagree, Ryan.
In the, in the, uh, in the three-year process of, of developing the UGA plan, there were, and, and we didn't specifically talk about the name of the Sweetwater Creek Park, but we talked about these hubs of parks. And actually, one of the, uh, gentlemen that came in, uh, we hired our parking trip planner as one of the fourth professionals that came in and helped put together that, uh, UGA master plan. And, uh, he was very talented out of Kingston, and I think we spent, uh, I think, of the whole plan, it was about twenty thousand dollars for his participation in leading some of the public input in some of those vignettes, and, uh, it was really well-received. So on the, on the, uh, UGA master plan, you'll also see many park hubs shown and grained throughout the corridor, including that, that area. That area, yeah, around Theller was always referred to as kind of the gem of our community in the future there, so, it was, it was depicted on the land.
Ken, maybe I'll...
I need to make another comment to follow up on Mr. Peterson's comment.
Actually, the area that Sweetwater Park is envisioned right now, um, that was a development node, and both the...
node, and both the school district parcel that they're currently looking at transferring to the port, and the private parcel, are two of eleven parcels that are all zoned multifamily. So if this project proceeds as it's envisioned, it's going to require rezoning or changing to the comprehensive plan. Please don't interrupt. Thank you.
Okay.
So, I want to get some...
That'd be great.
Okay, great.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Mindy Harlem, the Executive Director of the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. And our facility is the Salmon Center, which is, has been referred to a couple of times tonight with some partnering opportunities for some economic development and environmental education in our community. So I wanted to talk specifically about the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park project, and kind of go back to that reason that the school district acquired the property. When you look at the grant that was written to acquire that property, the purpose of acquiring that property was to make sure that we were furthering recreational opportunities and environmental education in our area. So it was supposed to be an expansion of the existing Theller Trail System and Project Center that exists now at the Theller Center. So it was acquired by Dr. Schindelheim, who had his heart in our community for environmental education and making sure that kids had access to recreational opportunities. So I specifically have been working on this project since 2012, but I know that there was a lot of work that was done prior to my executive directorship at the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. And we worked with a lot of community members to bring a lot of funding in to get that project to a thirty percent design level, so that we could have the project ready to go for grant applications. And so we definitely put a tremendous amount of work into it with a lot of citizens in the community who put in money. So we didn't apply for a grant to do that thirty percent design. We went out to the community to get funding to make it happen as a community-supported project, which, you know, I've been in the habitat restoration business for sixteen years now, and that doesn't happen. I mean, you really don't get that much community support behind a project unless it's something like this that the community really wants to see happen. So one thing that really is going to be a great opportunity for this community if we, when we develop this park, is the economic development component. I know that when communities have great parks and great trail systems within them, they bring folks in from outside of the community who want to come here to support local businesses, visit the restaurants, go to the stores and purchase snacks for the trail, or, you know, buy gas so they can go back to the communities that they live in. So it's really a, going to be a great economic development component of the North Mason So again, we have engineered drawings, and we also have over $250,000 in in-kind match that's been committed to the project. So we have folks who are willing to do, like Brian said, come in and do some of the grading, come in and do some of the demolitions, come in and do, donate gravel, donate all of these things. And again, that doesn't really happen with projects. I, I know this because I've been involved in this kind of work, you know, for a long time. It just doesn't happen. And so we, we don't want to turn down that opportunity for such a great project. And I know that one of the reasons that it has not been funded by grants over the last couple of years is the, the issue with not having it be in port ownership yet. So I'm really excited to hear that the final paperwork is being processed at this point, and that we could have the port owning that property very soon. Because that will definitely help with the grant applications that we've been applying for over the last couple of years, because it takes away the uncertainty of a willing landowner. So if the landowner is the one that is the, the sponsor of the project, then it's more likely to be able to move forward. So my, you know, work on the property has only been going on for the last six years, seven years or so. But I definitely am excited to see it come to fruition, and encourage you all to keep it in the Comp Plan, because it's where it needs to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, comments, concerns? All right, we'll close the public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Very curious, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Good to be here.
And thanks for caring.
Yeah.
On the average, we've had two of the most, most people at the meetings.
I know, we've had two. That's great. Thank you very much.